And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners' regular session. This will be the concluding session of the year 2017. This board met in executive session this evening to discuss a real estate matter and a personnel matter.[19.34][19.34](APPLAUSE). With that being said, I welcome everybody. This is December 11th, 2017. And Mr. Secretary, if you will please take the role.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarrity?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Aliva?
Here.
And Mr. Connell.
Here for this month. It's just a joke, come on! Let's be lighthearted about it, come on![51.11][51.11](LAUGHING). We're honored tonight to have Reverend Mary Jane Kirby, pastor of the Union United Methodist Church in Brookline, to lead, to please lead us in prayer. Will everyone please stand, if you can?
Good evening, friends, and let us pray. Gracious God, we would ask that you would bless and guide this community of Haverford Township tonight, as we gather here and throughout this special place we call home. Give wisdom and understanding, attentive hearts and discernment, as well as grace, to our commissioners and to all who serve. That includes the fire officials, the police, and all who have service within this community. We do pray for the same for those in the audience and attendance this evening, and for those that are our neighbors roundabout. Your direction is needed, Lord, in issues and needs, in joys and concerns discussed here, and in the decisions that are made. May kindness and compassion, respect and care for one another continue and grow. In this season, which is such a holy season for many people of faith, bring us closer together, that we may fulfill the task and responsibilities that you have entrusted to us. Please bless this community, our Lord, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Chief?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, one and all. We're going to begin item number two on the agenda tonight, is the Citizens Forum. And that's 20 minutes of registered speakers, and 20 minutes of item, those who wish to speak on the agenda items. This evening, we have to speak with us, number one on the list is Dr. Michael Levin. Doc Levin?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening, Commissioners, residents, and those who are watching. The backyard chickens came up during the two or three meetings and their interruption. I begin to think about this in connection with the status of safety of this community, if they have chickens. If chickens are allowed onto the properties of residents. Mr. Connell, I would like to take a few more minutes to go through this, page one with them. I would appreciate your respect for that.
We'll do a three and three, okay? Doctor?
Right. My interest in this question stems from a homeowner who seeks to raise chickens in his backyard, and the subsequent actions taken on that request by Haverford's Commissioners. In early deliberation, attention was placed on the placement of the chicken coop relative to property boundaries, as if the lives of chickens only take place within those boundaries. They don't, they go far beyond that. Re reference was made to disease of chickens, which I have included on the back of the sheet you have, mainly of chicken-borne and mosquito diseases, West Nile virus, H5N1, as you probably know. And this year, a different number, and because the season started so late, the vaccine is not likely to be as effective, but you'll take it anyway. The homeowner revealed that a chicken coop had already been erected on his property, although it was not stated whether chickens would spend any other of their free time elsewhere in the yard. He was also, he also was reassured that whatever decision was reached to allow such use would not affect his backyard project, presumably to raise two chickens. Chicken products, at least the eggs produced in the growing, in this growing backyard environment, were claimed to be superior to those obtained from local markets. This is questionable, considering that large hen houses receive unceasing care, vaccinations, controlled feeding, and a lifestyle more suited to the high-quality products with minimum disease, such as myriad bacterial, viral, fungal, parasitic, and feeding diseases, and yeast infections. They have many of the same ailments that domestic animals have, including cats and dogs. And in fact, 50 to 90 percent of you in this room contain one of those chicken-borne and cat diseases known as toxoplasma gondii, that accompany small chicken production. We don't control for novel diseases, but the ones on the back of the page are listed under diseases of chickens, and you will find that in Wikipedia, and those are hyperlinked, so that you can bring up the disease, and what causes it, and what its progress is. The diseases are carried by migratory birds, which infect mosquitoes, not by boring through the feather coat, but by taking the blood from the eyelids, which is close to the nostrils. The nostrils emit carbon dioxide, so as a consequence, that's where they're drawn to. A considerable expenditure is made each year to, each year to the hosts, to viruses in the international community. You know about this in the form of vaccines. Chickens cannot be vaccinated against West Nile virus. A considerable expenditure is made each year to select the known viruses. Yards are maintained with pesticides, herbicides, and various mulch, that are blown or transmitted into a yard by winds and rains. Chickens, when free range leading, ingest ground-dwelling insects and animal protein, such as worms, which also contain viruses and bacteria. Crushed plant material, proteins, pebbles, and soil pass through the crops, then through the gizzard, before digesting them in the deintestin, which is known as the gut. Essentially, food is crushed in the muscular gizzard, because most birds do not have teeth to chew. The ancient birds did, they were called dinosaurs. Captive feeding can overfeed chickens, which produce, produces its own set of problems with caged birds, because enlarged and deformed eggs cannot pass through the, into the nest. When found in nesting birds, those eggs must be withdrawn by sucking out the eggs with a hypodermic needle, and the contents and the remains of the shell material, then irrigating the cloaca, through which these, through which these fluids pass, bodily fluids, to which the contents are then drawn. Something of a job for a veterinarian who knows something about chickens, which I'm not sure that we have in this township. Young children with reduced immunity are particularly susceptible to chicken-borne diseases. They do not develop the immunity. When living with chickens in the yard, it's important not to take pity upon a sick bird, or one with bumblefoot, and bring it into the house. Bumblefoot is when the, when they cut their, when they cut their claws on the grasses or grass, and it becomes infected with bacteria. Humans run a risk of contracting, contacting a disease from chickens, who by nature are untrainable and incontinent, and ready to produce squirts of urine and feces together, known as a urocast, anytime, anyplace, anywhere, including on your beautiful rugs and cloths. Further care and handling for backyard chickens may be found in Backyard, the Backyard Chicken Association publication, or its website. You may also wish to consult Paul McMillan's book, A Pocket Guide to Chicken Diseases, section, Dealing with Health and Disease, 278 pages. If you have a large pocket, you can put it in. Also, a general guide on how to care for chickens. In closing, I am a professionally trained biologist, and can tell you with some certainty that at least 10 to 50 percent of this audience have a disease which chickens, and cats, and some dogs also have, toxoplasma gondii, which apparently does us no harm, at least that we can notice, although one parasitologist has noticed this and thinks that it does have an effect. And they, in fact, cause us to have our animal pets, among other things, love us and love us dearly, and to be transmissible from mother to newborn directly.
Thank you very much, Dr. Levin. I greatly appreciate you coming up here this evening. That's, we did give you an extended time on that. You did, you were able to give this.
Please don't.
No, I'm sorry, sir. Month after month, you come up, and you do this to me. Please sit down, you may come back up here. Dr. Levin, if you don't sit down, I'll have you removed.
That have been born with this.
Chief? Would you please sit him down? Thank you.
Mr. Connell will be glad to see you go.
You can hate my guts all you want, thank you very much. I'm certainly not chicken of you. And we can bring this up again, under, when we just have open discussion again, when the chickens come up in the agenda. Next on the agenda, I'm sorry, next here, we have Mr. Thomas, Jeffrey Thomas, who traffic signals and firehouse sirens.
Not here, huh?
Nope, okay. Anybody on this side of the room that wishes to talk about agenda items? First row here?
Yeah.
On, if it's on the agenda, yes.
So, you have to go up there.
Come on up to the mic, and we ask that you please give your name and address, and then you have, it's three minutes for discussion, please.
My name is Charlie McCammon. I reside at 1008 Crest Road in Wynwood, 19096. And I'm here today in support of the item agenda for allowing domestic chickens at residences within our township. My daughter and her friend have been involved with this project for about a year, trying to get an appropriate ordinance that would work for people within our community that would like to have chickens at pet, as pets. At no time has there been any suggestion that people would be housing chickens for agricultural purposes or anything like that. It's merely for a few chickens in a backyard coop, and I think all along the way, people have, the people that are for the chickens, have agreed to reasonable accommodations with regard to how they would handle the care and the, and the upkeep of the chickens. So, you know, when I've been thinking about this, I think about, okay, what is the role of the township with regard to the residents? And I think it's, you know, as residents that have homes, if people want to own chickens, it's within their liberty to do certain things on their property. And I think that if any measures go forward, the board should look at the most, least restrictive ways of allowing for chickens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did I see another hand on, in this row?
I'm William Darling. I live at 823 Dover Road, zip code 19096. And I would be speaking about the chicken ordinance. As I listened to what Dr. Levin spoke about, I thought we lived in a really scary world. And I think that it was only a generation or two ago, when many of our families had chickens. I know that my family during the depression depended on chickens in the backyard. I think that because we have forgotten what those skills are, and how we deal with that, it has become something that's fearful. We've lost skills. We're afraid to can our own food, because we're afraid we're going to poison ourselves. We're afraid to make our own bread, because we don't know what the yeast is going to do. So I think that while, yes, one should be concerned about the diseases of chickens, one might want to go to one of the chicken farms and look what caged hens look like, and what they do. And when they're raising chickens for meat, you should go in and smell the ammonia, and you should see the number of pounds of dead chickens they take out of those farms. And these are the productions that Dr. Levin is talking about, that are so carefully watched of. I think that most backyard chickens will be taken better care of, because there isn't a profit being made. So I would ask people to consider the fact that while indeed those diseases do exist, you can't deny that, but I think that the fear of that, and fear of taking care of animals, because we're so separated from our food supply, is something to consider. Maybe we need to become more concerned, and come, become closer involved with where our food comes from. So I'm in favor of people being allowed to have chickens in their backyard as pets. I guess that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this side of the room? Please come forward.
I've heard chickens in two years. I'm still, I'm here.
Hi, I'm Aurora Dyzel, 1614 Rose Glen Road in Havertown. And I didn't prepare anything, but I wanted to talk about the chickens. I am in support of the ordinance, and I would echo a lot of the things that the last speaker said. But one other thing new that I wanted to mention was, this actually, it's an idea that came from my mom. My parents live in Malvern, and they do have backyard chickens there, they're permitted. She's had them for over a year, and no problems, the neighbors love them too. But something she mentioned that I could bring forth as an idea, if there's still some worry about sanitation and education of people that own the chickens. She went to a education, a class, a course, done by a chicken feed company called Blue Seal. It was local to her, they do them for free, because they want to, they want people to buy their products. But they go over sanitation and everything, so people can be very aware of the risks and how to take care of it. I know I've heard of municipalities that make it a requirement for owning chickens, to take a course first. So that's maybe a possibility, if someone's teetering on, you know, how to vote, maybe adding something like that in could, you know, sway them. So I just wanted to bring that up as a possible option.
Thank you.
Rose Glen Road. Rose Glen?
Rose Glen, thank you.
Thank you very much. And anyone else on that side of the room? Nope, then that will conclude the Citizens Forum for agenda and, and for registered speakers. The, sorry, it's not there, so everything really pertaining to the chickens, we do have a vote on that tonight, and thank you very much for everyone's comments, and we will bring that up into, into the discussion. Thank you very much. Next on the, on the agenda, item number three is the Budget Hearing, continuation of the Budget Hearing and Adoption. And I will turn to Mr. Secretary and Township Manager to please begin those proceedings.
Larry, you want to introduce the...
Mr. President?
Commissioner Holmes.
I move that we adopt as final our 2018 budget.
Seconded by Mr. McGarrity.
Mr. President, I will turn this over to our Township Manager in a moment. There are, between the preliminary and the final budgets, there were discussions held at the township level. Obviously, every time, a decent review takes place, and there are some changes that happen that are more ministerial than discretionary. But the, the end result is, is a total change of $106,000 to our total revenues and our total expenditures. That $106,000 includes within it the $100,000 commitment of money from our reserve fund toward the expenditure of $100,000 toward Niter Hall and other historic resources that the township owns. So really, the net change altogether is approximately $6,200. If I understand correctly, that change is a, I hate to call that a rounding error, Township Finance Director was, but it certainly has no impact on the, on the, on the budget overall. No changes were made to any of the, any of the departments in terms of projected revenues or expected expenses, and it is my recommendation that we adopt the 2018 final budget as presented. Mr. Gentili, Mr. President, if I may, question Mr. Gentili?
Yes, please.
Mr. Gentili, is there anything you care to add or to fix on what I just said to the...
No. Mr. Holmes, I greatly appreciate you offering that resolution, and the, the only thing that I would like to add to it is one of the initiatives that our Public Works Department will be taking on over the first quarter of this year, is to be, to enhance our environmental efforts and goals into, for the township, is to seek out opportunities to move into diesel trucks, I'm sorry, propane, converting some of our diesel trucks over to propane, and we're looking at a potential for a, a different vehicle that will add into the police or the codes fleet, that would be a hybrid vehicle as well. So that's going to be an initiative that we'll undertake in the first quarter of 2018, that will not have an impact on the operating expenses for this year, but we believe it will have a positive impact to the environment, and potentially have savings for the 2019 budget.
Great, thank you, Township Manager. Mr. President, unless anybody has anything else to add, I just wanted...
I'd just like to thank Amy and Larry for the job that they've done in putting together this budget. I, you know, it's always easy to say yes, it's very hard to say no to people, and Larry and Amy have done a great job in, in balancing things here, and always being cost-conscious. So we appreciate all your efforts in representing the taxpayers.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And as a reward for your excellent work, we're going to put you in new digs in the next month, in the new Haverford Township building. Because as we extract more and more services from fewer and fewer people within the township, I, I have always felt, and I think we've come through on our obligation, to make sure that we provide the proper setting and the most modern facilities, and the efficient facilities for our people to use. So it is not a coincidence that we continue to get excellent work out of our township administrators, as well as all of our township staff, and I am pleased that in 2018, they will be able to work under what I think will be much, much better conditions.
I'd like to say something, Mr. President. As many of you know on this board, I'm always probably the no vote on the budget, but last year I voted for the budget. This year, I fully intend to vote for this budget as well, and that's because of the comments, exactly what Commissioner Lewis stated. We have a Township Manager and a Finance Director, probably two of the finest in the county, that have looked at our budgets and looked at ways to save money, and it's been an unbelievable process throughout the years, and I certainly appreciate the efforts that Amy and Larry make, and the hard work of the township employees that work for the township. So you know, just so you know how I feel.
Thank you, Commissioner D'Amelio. I agree. Thank you, Commissioner. There being nothing further, we have a motion, and it is seconded by Mr. McGarrity. And Mr. Secretary, if you please take the role.
Certainly. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, the motion carries. Item number three B. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the final reading of Ordinance Number P22 of 2017, authorizing the imposition of an annual sewer rate in the amount of $4.70, $4.70 per thousand gallons of water consumed.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva.
Mr. President, that, that constitutes a no change to the previous year's annual sewer rate, and, and I am pleased to recommend that we adopt this ordinance.
Are there any further comments? There being none. Seconded by Mr. Aliva, if you please take the role, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, the motion carries. Item number three C.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the final reading of Ordinance P23 of 2017, establishing the annual trash fee of $197.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lewis.
Mr. President, this, this annual trash fee is unchanged from last year. It is a fee that represents not all of the costs of, of our trash collection, but a not insubstantial portion of it, as we try to balance the difference between, you know, fees for services and, and taxes for services, and I recommend we adopt it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? There being none, please take the role.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes, the motion carries. Item number three D.
Mr. President?
Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 2829 of 2017, fixing the tax rate for the year 2018 at 8.185 mils.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Discussion, Mr. Holmes.
This does reflect that 2.4 percent increase in taxes that was necessary for us to, to arrive at the budget figures that we have arrived at. For those folks watching for the first time, who don't know the nomenclature, what 8.185 mils represents, is, is approximately eight tenths of 1 percent of the assessed value on a home, and that is the property taxes that are assessed to our property owners here in Haverford Township. And for, so people can understand, the median property assessment, so that means 50 percent of the people in this township have this number or less, and 50 percent of the homeowners in this township have this number or more, the median property assessment in this, in Haverford Township is $145,000. And the tax bill would go from $1,159 last year to $1,187 this year, 2018. So that represents an increase of approximately $28 per year, not approximately, exactly $28 per year. The average property assessment, as opposed to the median property assessment, is approximately $175,000. So on an average property assessment, the tax bill would go from $1,399 to $1,432, for an increase of approximately $33 per year. I get in trouble any time that I make a comparison as to what $28 or $33 could buy. I simply will say this, for substantially less than a cable bill, our average, our average tax bill here in Haverford Township does provide to people, two trash collection pickups a week, single-stream recycling, 70 full-time police officers, 34 parks, and 135 miles of streets that are kept safe by our township. There are numerous other activities, our Parks and Rec Department, our stadium, all sorts of other things. I consider what we still do in this town, to be delivering a heck of a bargain to the taxpayers, and I am proud to recommend this budget, and I do ask my, my colleagues to, to adopt Ordinance 2829.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further comment? There being none, please take the role.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, the motion carries. Item number 3E.
Mr. President, if I may, our, the last item of our budget portion of this hearing is my request that we all adopt ordinance 2830 of 2017 appropriating funds established to be required for specific purposes of financing the municipal government for the year 2018? Is that a typo?
18.
Including all taxes, fees, service charges, and other revenue sources provided within all funds.
Second.
Ooh.
All right, give it to Mario.
I'll beat you up.
Okay.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Oliva. Any further comments?
And this is the whole shabazz, as long as everybody says yes to this, we can go ahead and operate next year. So I do recommend that everybody say yes.
Okay. Can you make sure to give approval of these final numbers here, because that's what the change is worth, yes?
Yes, and so before we do this, since it is the last act of the budget, I've been asked by our Finance Director, very specifically, the general fund, the total revenues from preliminary of $43,201,341 to $43,307,541, that is the change I referred to earlier as $106,200. The sewer fund has a decrease in it from $4,965,844 to $4,859,89 for a change, that's revenues and expenses. The change is $106,755 to the negative. And our capital fund, total revenues, final preliminary was $51,778,876,000, the final is $51,800, I'm sorry, the preliminary is $51,778,876,000, the final is $51,878,876, that is the $100,000 change we referred to for the Knight or Hall renovations. And if there is nothing else from our Finance Director or Township Manager, I would ask all of my colleagues to adopt ordinance number 2830 and bring our 2018 budget discussions to a close.
There is nothing further, so I'll ask Mr. Secretary, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yeah, Mr. Holmes and I are in agreement with everything Mr. Holmes said, so I'll vote yes.
How about that?
And that's unusual. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Oh, oh, oh. I thought I saw a guy in a suit and a white pair.
I guess I'll agree as well, yes.
Okay. Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, motion carries, and that will conclude the end of the budget portion of this regular meeting. Congratulations, Finance Director, Township Manager, and to all your department heads who had to give up some things in order to maybe put things in other places, but thank you very much for all of that. Township is in, really, the township is in great hands and growing. We're going to go to our regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and item number four, our agenda number four is Commissioner Committee Updates. Do any of the Commissioners have any updates?
Well, I mean, the police moved into the new building. We had a soft opening on Friday, so I don't know if that constitutes as an update, but it actually was a beautiful event, and myself, I was there, Commissioner Wexler, Commissioner McCloskey, and Siegel, and Connell. Jimmy?
Yeah, thank you.
Was there, I'm sorry.
And Commissioner Connell.
And Connell, that's right, you were the...
Connell was there.
You were the speaker.
Just so everybody knows, I was there when the original police station opened back in 1875, so I was there for this one, too.
In fact, Commissioner Connell gave a wonderful speech, it was very telling about the Police Department, and I want to thank the Police Department and the township for the hard work that I know you guys endured, but it's a beautiful facility for you, and best of luck to you in the new building.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further updates, any other Commissioner updates?
Mr. President, just for a moment, we had talked about putting the Dogs in the Park ordinance on the agenda tonight. We did not do so because Assistant Township Manager Denny wanted to make certain that we had the lists accurate, and we did some very minor tweaking and fine tuning of the ordinance, so rather than put it on until we had the lists accurate, we'll defer it till next, next meeting.
So the dog ordinance is...
Not on tonight.
On pause. Okay, let us move on. Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else?
It was hot on his last night.
I'm always hot. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen, for your updates. Item number five is the Township Auditor Update, and Mr. Zlatnik, welcome again, and for your...
Final report.
Final report.
Well, my final report, I examined the expenses for the period commencing November 15th, ending December 11th. I raised various questions and asked for substantiation of certain expenses. All the questions were answered to my satisfaction, and I was provided with the substantiation I needed, so that in my opinion, there were no irregularities. I just want to thank the Board for all the courtesies that you've extended to me and all your dedication and hard work on behalf of our community. And finally, I want to thank our Finance Director, Amy Cutherson, because she made my job so manageable. I would, every time that she sent me the reports, I would raise questions and ask for substantiation, and the following morning, Amy would give me elaborate on all the information that I needed, and so I want to thank her so much for, again, making my job extremely manageable. Thank you.
Mr. President.
If you would please remain at the podium, and the Finance Commissioner, Commissioner Holmes is going to...
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any else going up?
Folks, just so you understand what we have to do each month when we get our agenda, it's approximately this much that we have to print off if we're not being environmentally conscious like we should be, and this much of...
I don't print it off. I don't print it off. I have a couple of, five pages on it, that's it.
Much of the agenda is the warrants that Mr. Zlatnik goes through before each meeting. So it may look like I'm doing a lot when I'm doing the approval of the warrants and talking like an auctioneer, trying to get through that one ordinance to get everybody to pass it, but it's the easiest thing in the world, because I know that Gary has worked as hard as he has to go through every expenditure that we do every month and make sure that his questions are answered. So I can't thank you enough for your work, Mr. Zlatnik, your extraordinary professionalism. You truly transformed this job of Township Auditor and made, and done your function, which is to stand between the public and this Board and be an extra set of eyes on everything we do. So we just wanted to present you with a small token of our appreciation, this plaque. Gary, many thanks to your outstanding financial efficiency and your role as Havford Township Auditor. Havford Township Board of Commissioners, this day, December 11th, 2017. Appreciate it.
That will conclude the Auditor's update. Item number six on the agenda is the Approval of Minutes. Mr. D'Amelio?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Regular Meeting Minutes of November 13th, 2017, preliminary budget meeting minutes of November 20th.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarrett.
He's quick, that was quick. Yeah, he's good. He's been doing it for a while.
Any comments? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number seven, Approval of the Warrants.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number 12 of 2017 totaling $3,712,996.04, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for November 16, 2017, in the amount of $666,018.84. The general sewer fund payroll for December 1st, 2017, in the amount of $636,092.26. General Fund Disbursements, number 12 of 2017, in the amount of $718,732.87. Sewer Fund Disbursements, number 12 of 2017, in the amount of $301,572.61. Community Development Block Grant Fund Disbursement, number 12 of 2017, in the amount of $62,876.87. Capital Project Fund Disbursement, number 12 of 2017, in the amount of $1,322,094.98. And a credit card statement, ending November 27th, 2017, in the amount of $5,607.61.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Oliva. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, our Township Auditor has once again reviewed all of these warrants. Any questions that his review has raised have been brought to the attention of our Township Personnel who have answered his questions to his satisfaction. He has recommended that we approve these warrants. I agree with his recommendation and recommend to all of you that we do.
Any further discussion? There being none, please take your roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, the motion carries and the warrants are approved. Item number eight is the Authorization and the Purchase of Energy-Efficient Lighting.
Motion to authorize Township Manager to execute purchase order through Marco Energy and its, what is it, Maco Energy and its supply vendors for the purchase of energy-efficient streetlights to be retrofitted at 1619 locations throughout the township.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Discussion.
Mr. President, as I understand, this is the third phase of the retrofitting of our lights. There are phases left to do in the township, but we are proceeding in the manner recommended by our, by our staff and by our Township Manager. It's a combination of purchasing the lights with an outright payment, and then also there's a, there's a payment over time cooked into the, into a monthly fee that's paid, that's paid associated with the, with the streetlight company, and we expect to save substantial money over time with the increased efficiency of the lights, and it is our goal ultimately to retrofit the remainder of the township over the next several years.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did you hear a comment from this side? Mrs. Swidop, do you wish to approach any comment?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
I think that the installation costs are what you're going to see in your monthly energy bill, but this is a purchase for the infrastructure.
Thank you very much. If there is nothing further, Mr. Secretary, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, the motion carries. Item number nine is ordinance P-172017 for the backyard hens.
A motion, motion to adopt first reading ordinance number P-172017, further amending and supplementing Chapter 49, Animals.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Oliva. Discussion. We have had a discussion on this many times, over and over, and tonight we heard again comments from the residents. Is there anybody on this Board, the Ordinance Committee, would you like to elaborate on...
I think we've discussed this at length, so I don't, you know, it's as we discussed at our last meeting. I don't have anything new.
And does anybody wish...
I would...
Go ahead, Mr. Holmes.
Yeah, I, my biggest concern, I have a number of concerns about this, but my principal concern and why I will vote against this ordinance as currently drafted is that I believe it allows hens in properties that are far too small. The 20-foot setback for me from property lines and from dwellings, I don't believe is sufficient to, to provide an adequate buffer between the homes that are going to house up to four chickens in a coop and those homes in the neighborhood that do not. And frankly, as much as we've talked about this, I don't think people realize now that a majority of the neighborhoods of our township now, starting, I guess, one month from now, if this ordinance passes a second time, their neighbors will be able to install chicken coops and raise up to four chickens in their backyard. I think in a town as small as ours, and I certainly respect the positions that were presented to us by members of the public as well as, you know, opinions of Board members here, but I think raising chickens during the Depression as opposed to 2017, when we have 50,000 people living in less than nine square miles here in this township, is something this Board should give very, very serious thought to before it allows any yard 45 feet wide to have a chicken coop in its, within its confines. So I have raised, and my colleagues have raised, other issues regarding increasing the scope of the work of our Codes Department, who I think already do a very good job and are taxed pretty substantially in enforcing the laws we already do have. We're now adding chicken coop maintenance and review to their already busy day, and the smaller we make the properties, the smaller the property that we allow these chicken coops on, just simply the greater burden we're going to put on our township personnel to supervise them, and a burden we're going to put on neighbors in very small, tightly-packed neighborhoods such as my own, the Sixth Ward, and others that other members of this Board represent. So I would be, I would consider this ordinance if the numbers in 4910C were changed substantially from 20 feet, but I cannot support this ordinance in its current, in its current state.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything further? Mr. McGarrett?
Well, the only thing I want to make is one correction, is when Larry said about the, this is one Larry and I disagree, okay, but that's okay, too. But we're the second-largest township in Delaware County, so we're not that tiny little town that we're talking about there. We're a very large...
Yeah, I don't mean we're a small town, I just mean we're a tightly-packed town. I mean, compared to Chester County or Malvern, I'm sorry.
Okay. What is it? No, no, I'm done.
Okay.
No, but when people talk about raising chickens in Malvern, the comparison is comparing, you know, we are, we are 53,000 people in nine square miles versus 12,000 people in a township of the third class that might cover 30 square miles. I mean, I'm not talking about us being a little town in terms of our, our thinking or our population, I'm talking about a densely, tightly-packed neighborhood such as almost all of the Sixth Ward, where I do not believe chicken coops in those backyards are what, are what my constituents, or frankly, most of our constituents want.
Okay, and should it pass? Actually, they could come forward. I think you should at least give it a year, try it. I'm for it. Anybody on this side?
So it's 20 feet from a property line, is that correct?
From dwelling or property line, yes.
I mean, back and side yards.
Side yard setbacks?
Mm-hmm.
How about rear yards, 20 feet rear yard?
Same thing.
The exterior limits, is how it's phrased.
And Commissioner Holmes, what were you looking for, more than 20 feet?
Oh, yeah, I think it should be 50. I mean, it should be at least 40. I mean, it was 25, and it moved to 20, and I still don't understand why it went from 25 to 20, because we've never...
We should call a roll.
Because the average, because the average home in Havford Township is 50, so if you made it 25, most of the houses in Havford Township wouldn't be able to have a coop.
But I don't think we want, then that would mean that we want...
You asked a question.
No, no, but we, but that's just, I mean, I understand that, but the problem is you're now saying we want the majority of homes in Havford Township to be able to have chickens, and I don't, I don't agree with that. we want the majority of homes in Havertown to be able to have chickens, and I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Well, you have your opinion, so can we please call a roll?
You know, I have to say that if it was, if the one acre stayed in here in this ordinance, I would have supported it.
Yeah, but it was an acre, and I'm willing to make smaller than an acre, but I mean...
My other concern, and I'm sorry, but my other concern has always been the Ronin issue that continues to plague the township in significant numbers. I know that for a fact, on Greenbrier, we're still having an issue there, and we've told residents about bird feeders and things like that, how...
But certainly wasn't the chickens that brought them.
No, no, I understand that, and I'm not trying to imply that. What I'm saying is that this just adds to my fear, and, you know, again, I think if it was a one acre, I probably would have supported this. It's not to say that we can't visit this if we turn it down again.
I'm hoping that you don't, but okay.
No, in the future. Anything we do, we can always look at again.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just so the public's aware, we're not going from 25 to 20. The current ordinance today is 100-foot setback. That's what's on the books today, so we're changing it from 100 feet to 20. So that's the difference.
It's huge. It's a huge difference.
I just want to point that out. Let's call a roll.
Call a roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
No.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
No.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is item number 10, ordinance P-212017 for traffic. This is a second reading.
Mr. President?
Mr. Oliva?
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance P-212017, authorizing the establishment of the following traffic restrictions on the following highways. Parking of commercial vehicles prohibited at all times in excess of 8,000 pounds. Lansdowne Road, both sides from Park Road to Landillo.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. McCloskey. Is that what that was? Okay. Comments?
When are we addressing township-wide the parking issues?
That's the ordinance.
That, well, that, we had anticipated doing it at the February work session, because we don't have a work session in January, and that certainly is something that we'll have, I assume, spirited discussion.
There's two different definitions of commercial vehicles currently in our books. One of them is about size, and one of them is just about writing. Which one is this one going to be? Do we know?
This one is going to be in excess of 8,000 pounds.
This is for size?
With or without writing?
It's just commercial vehicles.
I know, but commercial vehicles are defined various ways in our town. We have two different ordinances that address, so I'm just curious where in our books, if anyone knows, this one's going to go.
Let me double-check, because we have, the ordinance committee discovered we have 192 streets with separate restrictions from, with the exceptions to our ordinance. That was the count at this point.
So I just want to...
So it's not as easy as it seems.
Right, it doesn't have to be notated on this ordinance, but I'm just curious, because we, each time we pass one of these ordinances, it goes into our code book, into a certain area. And there are two or three different areas where commercial vehicles are...
Laurie, you can answer this question.
Are listed.
No, it's just not, but we have to have the discussion anyway.
Sorry?
Mrs. Whitup, it's the question is...
The definition of commercial vehicles. Larry Holmes had a question?
Do you know, ordinance P-212017, there's a couple different sections in our code where commercial vehicles are prohibited and all the streets are listed. Do you know which one this one's going to go under?
Well, the 8,000-pound one would be in C, so 175, I think it's 28.
28.
Very good, Laurie. Not surprised.
It's a pop quiz.
I'm trying to quiz you, I legitimately care about this. I mean, I wouldn't do any parking ordinances until we do, or any of these ordinances, till we tackle this in February, but I just want to make sure this one's going in the right place.
I actually wasn't involved with this ordinance, so you really are giving me a pop quiz. But if it's 8,000 pounds, it would be under C, because C is the one with the 8,000-pound restriction. Under 17528, the parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
If there's nothing further, please take the role.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, the motion carries. Item number 11 is a resolution number 2070-2017 on the 2018 meeting minutes.
Motion to adopt resolution 2017 approving the 2018 Board of Commissioners' boards and commissions' meeting dates.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Is there any comment? There being none, please take the role.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, the motion carries. Item number 12 is continuation of citizens' forum, we're not agenda items. Is there anyone on this side of the room? Is there anybody on this side of the room? There being no takers, we will go into item number 13 for new business. Commissioner McCloskey?
Mr. Connell, I wanted to raise before this board, something that came to my attention last week. There was a recent statute passed at the state level, an act that added a category four to casino licensing, and the issue was presented in terms of slot machines at, the intention of the statute is to put essentially slot machines at truck stops throughout Pennsylvania. The reason I'm bringing it up in new business, and I've spoken to some of you about this, and I apologize for it being in new business, but the state gave us a deadline of December 31, 2017, to opt out, and if you don't opt out by December 31, 2017, you know, you're out of luck, and essentially then the state law would apply. Now, obviously, we don't have any truck stops currently existing in Havertown, but given the deadline that the state has applied, the concern would be, and, you know, this was being addressed in the city of Philadelphia, was that if a gas station or some other entity made some changes to a property lines, or made some changes to a property to fall under the technical definition of a truck stop, they would then be permitted to have essentially a mini casino at that location with loads of slots machines. A couple points I would like to put out, we have a resolution that I asked Larry and Laurie and some of the staff to put together, and I passed it out to most, some of you. If you need another copy, I have it here. But we can always change this at a later date if it becomes necessary. There are some budgetary considerations in terms of what you would get, what the township would get from revenue from these slot machines. But again, the issue is the December 31 hard stop. If we don't opt out by that point, we don't have a choice in the future if somebody came in and took some property over. We've also discussed this with our solicitor, Mr. Byrne. I don't know if you want to comment on it before.
No, I think you're right. I think you explained it well, and you're right, you know, we don't do it now, prohibit it, we won't be able to prohibit it in the future, but we can change it back to allowing it if we want to, at least one time, yeah.
Sounds like a future battle like we have with the billboards, so Kevin, I'll second that.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the resolution?
Can I ask a question? Does anybody know the answer to this? If we do prohibit now, and we choose in 19 or 20 to allow them, is that a one-time act?
Yes.
Or, so we, once we've allowed them, they're here for good?
Yes.
Except that it's unlikely that it will come up, simply because the definition of a truck stop includes a three-acre property, they have to sell 50,000 gallons of diesel fuel a month, so it's, I don't think we'll ever see it, but I think it's in the, or on the side of caution.
I never thought I'd see a Y or a Mr. Storage, so I mean, I'm counting, you know, our lifetime, we'll see a truck stop and a casino if we allow it.
I don't think we'd opt in anyway, so...
Yeah, I mean, the issue is really just, we don't want to give anybody the opportunity to get creative with our zoning or any laws, and then us be in a position where we don't have...
Yeah, no, absolutely, I get it. But I just was curious whether that's, it's a one-way ratchet. Once you allow these, or if you let the time go by without allowing them, you could never stop them. Is that right? You can never prohibit them.
Right, once you allow them, you can't prohibit them, unless, you know, that would be up to the state to prohibit them.
Municipalities all across Pennsylvania have until 12/31/17 to prohibit these.
And again, just so the public understands, that's why this is being brought up under new business, because it just wasn't on our radar beforehand, and obviously, we don't have truck stops, and I don't think the design of the law was for townships such as ours, but I think it is probably good practice to make sure.
But the design of the law was to get that date to come and go without people knowing about it, I'll tell you that, that's for sure.
I'm not going to comment on that.
Jim Byrne?
So bravo to you and folks who spotted this, didn't let the time go by without us acting.
Jim, if we pass Kevin's amendment tonight, is this two readings we need for this?
This is a resolution. We only need one.
Just one?
Just one, yeah.
Okay, good.
What we will need to do, though, is we need to get a motion to put it on the agenda, add it to the agenda, and vote on that first, and then allow any public comment on this issue only.
I move we allow Commissioner McCloskey's resolution for us to prohibit Class IV casinos and truck stops in Havertown Township. So I can add to the agenda.
That was seconded by Mr. McGarretty, and I'll take a show of hands, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any abstaining, therefore? Mr. McCloskey, if you would please read resolution number 2073.
I guess we should also open, since it's a new resolution that we're going to speak of, and just add it to the agenda, if there's any public comment on this issue only.
Do you want me to read it first?
You want me to read it first? Yeah. Laurie, I believe it's resolution, it would then be resolution 2071?
I'm sorry, 2073-2017.
2073, all right. So proposed resolution number 2073-2017, whereas Act 42 of 2017 amends the Pennsylvania consolidated statutes by authorizing Category IV casinos within the Commonwealth to expand gaming operations for Category I, II, or III casinos by creating, quote, "mini-casinos", and whereas the aforesaid Act 42 of 2017, Section 1305.1, gives municipalities the option to prohibit Category IV casinos within its jurisdiction, and whereas a resolution of the Board of Commissioners electing to prohibit the location of a Category IV casino within the township of Havertown must be filed with the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board by December 31, 2017. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havertown, County of Delaware County hereby prohibits the placement and operation of a Category IV licensed facility within the township of Havertown pursuant to Section 1305.1, subsection A, subsection 1, and directs this resolution to be filed with the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board before December 31, 2017. Resolved this 11th day of December 2017. Township of Havertown, Chris Connell, Senior, President.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. McGarretty. And at this time, I would like to open up the floor to anyone who has any public comment on this. Anybody on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room? There being none, does this board have any further questions? Please take the role.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, the motion passes, the resolution is active. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. McCloskey, great job. Excellent. Does anybody else have anything further on new business?
Mr. President, I think I've talked to a number of you privately about the fact that I'll be away on January 2, which is our reorganization meeting, and I have a question for the solicitor as to whether, if I'm able to call in, am I able to participate in that meeting?
Yeah, I took a look at that issue, and what I found is that by our charter and by our regulations, there is no prohibition on calling in. There is some case law, I don't have it in front of me tonight, but I can send it to anybody that's interested in it. It goes back to 1992 and says that you can call, you can't hand a note in, you can't do it by proxy, but you can call in as long as you are participating in the meeting. So, and Roberts Rules provides for the same type thing. Probably be a good idea at some point in time for us to update our regulations to not only not prohibit that, but to allow that so that we can do it, but I think that as long as you called in, we were able to identify you and you participated in the meeting, that you'd be able to do it. That's my thought. I'm happy if anybody has any other questions on that, to look into it further, but that's what I think the law is.
Well, my concern is that the definition in the First Class Township Act under Section 701 is organize, and organize, I thought meant in person. I didn't know you could organize from a distance.
I think that you can. I mean, I'll be happy to check that. I mean, that particular issue, I have not looked at. I'll be happy to look at that issue for you tomorrow, I just, but as far as just the question I thought that was out there was whether you could participate by phone and cast a vote by phone. And what I did find, as long as you're identified, and as long as you're actually participating in the meeting, you're not just sending a note and saying, "I vote in favor," or "I don't," by proxy.
Especially in light of the provision that says if a majority don't attend, those present may adjourn the meeting. So if the statute is talking about those present, I don't know how you can be present in any other way. I don't know that we had any ability to have proxies, or to, not proxies, but a remote access. So that's my concern. I'd welcome your input.
And I'll look into that. I mean, it's a good question. I'll give you a call tomorrow, and we can discuss it further, and I'll send you the cases that I've found so far.
You're right, I don't know.
So, but I, from the research we have done, I think that, I think it would be okay, that would be my opinion. But I'm happy to discuss the rest of that with you more.
Obviously, answer anyone's questions or concerns, address anyone's concerns, and then issue an opinion to the board.
Sure, mhm.
As far as I can or can't, so I just have some direction.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a concern, Commissioner Lewis, that in my 12 years on this board, and I guess the 16 years that I've been paying attention to it, I've never seen it happen. The request has never been made, people go on vacation, I've missed a number of the January meetings for an unavoidable conflict in the last several years on a committee, not the organizational meeting with the following meeting, where we had numerous appointments. So I'm, whether or not, at the end of the day, our solicitor comes up with an opinion one way or another, I would ask you to consider our past practice, as well as the precedent of this. The reorganization meeting for Havertown Township has been, in my 12 years, the, I guess, the first business day of the year. It's, I guess it's Tuesday this year, and not Monday. It's the second, I would, I understand your need not to be here, you know, for the commitment you've made to be elsewhere. Numerous meetings, and numerous things in this township have not happened because of 4-4 votes during times that people were unavoidably sick, or detained for some other reason, or on vacation, an already scheduled vacation. I don't like the precedent of calling in, it isn't something we've done. I don't like the precedent of calling in, it isn't something we've done. You will not participate in the same way that we will participate, looking at our fellow residents, and looking at each other, and communicating in the same way. So I would ask you to rethink the request. But obviously, Mr. Byrne will let us know whether that request is unnecessary.
I don't know what happens, quite frankly, if there's a 4-4 deadlock. Again, we can't reorganize with a 4-4 deadlock, so.
Well, let's run the scenario through.
This meeting is not just any meeting.
Run the scenario through. If we can't pick a single person to do anything in January, then the township manager will preside over that meeting. Keep in mind, the only role that the township, that the president of this board plays is to vote last and set the agenda. We already know the agenda for the first meeting in January. So if we get a vote for the presidency, and a president is not elected because there's a 4-4 tie, and we try numerous things, and we have 4-4 ties, then the president won't be appointed at that meeting, and we'll then consider a vice president. If a vice president is elected at that meeting, that vice president will preside over that meeting. If a vice president is not elected at that meeting, because we have another 4-4 tie, the township manager will continue to preside over that meeting, and will then consider the township solicitor, the solicitor of the Civil Service Commission, members of the zoning board, and everything else. If that night goes on, and every single vote is a 4-4 tie, what I can assure you is the township will have much bigger problems than simply your absence from that meeting. And so I would suggest that we are worried about something that isn't really going to reveal itself as a huge problem. But I do have a concern about participating by phone. I do not think that participation is meaningful, and I think if it were anything but the reorganization meeting, I think you or any of us who weren't going to be able to be at that meeting would simply sit that one out and do whatever it was we had to do instead. Yeah, I don't say this with my voice raised, or any kind of judgment, I just.
I'll comment if it matters.
I think clearly I can participate by phone as well as I can in person. I mean, this is.
Andy, don't sell yourself short, you're a much bigger hit in person than to be over the phone.
I think, I believe that it is important, this meeting cannot be moved. This is, I mean, we've had meetings in which we've tabled things because that person hasn't been here in several cases. If somebody says that this is, if a commissioner says that this is really important, we have tabled things and moved things so that person could be here to vote if it was important to them. In this case, this is the most, I believe, the most important meeting, and on top of that, it can't be moved. So we can't say, well, we'll move it to the following day, or we'll move it to next week. It has to be on that day. It cannot be on any other day. So I would like for everybody to take part, and every, the 5th ward, to be able to have a voice in that, and not restrict the 5th voice, if we can easily do that within the law.
I mean, if it's legal, yeah.
If it's legal, within the law, then those people in the 5th ward should be able.
Let's not pretend that this is in about 5-4 votes. I mean, let's not pretend that we wouldn't be having this discussion if this was a 6-3 majority of Republicans versus Democrats right now, and come on!
Yes, we would, I would have the exact same thing.
Mr. D'Amelio, you have the floor.
They'd want it, would they?
Never have. This is really unnecessary. I can't stop you from doing it if it's legal, Mr. Lewis.
Let me recognize Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes, please.
Please.
Thank you. I believe that this is the 21st century, and last time I checked, we have a commissioner who's willing to call in, to participate in the process, and there should be no reason why, if it is legal, that we should not allow the 5th Ward Commissioner, who's going to be away, able to call in, and he wants to participate. And as Commissioner Oliva said, he's representing the 5th Ward of Haverford Township. If he wishes to participate in this meeting, and it is legal, that is something that we should allow.
Well, if it's the. Mr. Siegel?
If it's legal, I agree. However, Pennsylvania law is what governs what we must do, and that's the First Class Township Code. And the First Class Township Code, for example, talks about the fact that the organization meeting may also be considered a regular monthly meeting, and the monthly meetings we have to meet, and a majority of the board constitutes a quorum. I don't know of anywhere in Pennsylvania law that authorizes quorum for first-class, second-class cities to include persons who are not physically present. And while, yes, we are in a technological age, Pennsylvania didn't revise its business laws until recently to allow for voting on boards in various capacities not present. So, you know, we're governed by the First Class Township Code. I respect Mr. Byrne, and I welcome his analysis, because, you know, I respect that, but I don't know that we have the answer as we sit here tonight. Quorum is not defined under the First Class Township Code, neither is reorganization. Under the Statutory Construction Act, they're supposed to be given their common usage. Common usage, and we're talking about Roberts, quorum is persons present. So unless there's some case or statute, we're bound by this regardless, is my interpretation at this point, only hearing of this, you know, I've heard rumors about the request, and I knew Mr. Lewis was probably going to be away, but really researching, and this is the first time I've really looked at this, and I have concerns.
As I said, I'll send you the cases that I found, and the materials I found, I'll be happy to send them to you, and, you know, we'll discuss.
If I agree with you, I'll say so.
Right, okay.
Thank you very much. Anybody have anything else on their new business? Well, then, let's go into the next item. Number 14 is other business.
Before we do other business, I have something. Jimmy, could you please come up to the podium? Few words this evening for a good friend, Chris Connell, here. When I think of Chris Connell, I think of the golden rule. Do unto others what you would have done unto you. I think anyone who has ever interacted with Chris, or attended one of these meetings, would agree that he always treats others with respect. He is unfailingly courteous, patient, and considerous, regardless of the circumstance, except for this evening.
I did it respectfully.
Yeah, I know, I get it. I'm just poking fun at Chris. Chris is the definition of a good man. More than anything else, that is the quality he brought to his role as the 8th Ward Commissioner for the last eight years, and as president of this board for the last two. It has been my honor to serve with him. Chris's time as Commissioner is really an extension of both who he is as a person and a member of this community. Among other things, he's a lifelong member of Lenark Fire Company, a volunteer for the Haverford Township Day Committee, a volunteer with Tree Tenders, a volunteer with the Annunciation Church, and a small business owner, used to be a small business owner here in Haverford Township. In addition, he and his wife, Michelle, have raised five children here in Haverford Township, along with several dogs, which we have raised. Over the past eight years, Haverford Township has moved steadily in the direction of a better tomorrow. Just last week, we dedicated a long, needed new police station, and the new municipal building is nearing completion. Both projects were approved on Chris's leadership. As a fellow Commissioner, lifelong resident, and most notably as a friend, I know I speak for my fellow commissioners, everyone in this room. Chris, please accept this gift as a, do you want to take it? Yeah, there it is. Please accept this gift as a token of our appreciation for your service to Haverford Township. We thank you and your family for all the time and support you have invested for the good of all the residents in this township, and we wish you all the best in whatever the future holds for you, Chris.
You know, before Chris speaks, I just wanted to just say this quote, which reminded me about Chris from John F. Kennedy. He says, "As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to do it by action." And Chris has done that in this township for our residents, for the 6th Ward, 8th Ward, I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, the 6th also.
And for everybody. He has never turned anyone down. He's always willing to help, he's been at so many different events for Haverford Township. I can't thank him enough. And being a past president of the Board of Commissioners, I can tell you how difficult it is to work with all nine of us, and he has done such a fantastic job, and he will be really missed by the township. Chris, I hope that quote reflects how we feel about you.
I greatly appreciate it, thank you very much. You know, I thank you, everyone, for this great honor, and, excuse me, I'd like to say to everyone, people in the 8th Ward, people of Haverford Township, thank you very, very much for allowing me to represent you, for the honor of almost coming full circle with this. I started in the township as a volunteer, you know, at 16 years old, back in the mid-'70s, and was involved in many different organizations and committees and what have you, and then when I ran for Commissioner, I thought, you know what, that would be, that's the highest that I could do in the township. But I found it was such a great honor to do that. It was so fulfilling to be able to help someone, to maybe guide a group in a direction, and most of all, to learn so much more about my community. I have learned so much in these past eight years, it's incredible. And I've gotten to meet so many wonderful families that have an idea, and they want to take it farther. Larry Gentile, I don't even remember who he is. You gotta stand on a box or something. You know, I tell you, you have turned this township in a direction that has made it absolutely sound, that the things that you do, it's not an easy job being township manager. There are times that you have to say, "No, we can't do that," and you're not popular, but you do it. You have the guts to do it. Assistant Township Manager Lori Wittup, holy mackerel. I mean, if ever there was a right-hand woman that this township needed, it's you. Lori, you have, it's absolutely incredible how you can put your finger and recall something, and be very polite and diplomatic about something, and tell us as commissioners, you know what, here's how I suggest it. And then, sometimes when it comes down to it, you says, "No, this is the way you need to do it, because you're going to get yourselves in trouble," whatever the case may be. And you have the Township Engineer Dave Pinone, our Township Solicitor. These are all teams of people that have helped me and my colleagues through the years, Tim Denny, with an outstanding recreation program. The best in the Commonwealth, the best in the Commonwealth. Our finances from Amy Cuthbertson, her new policies that we indoctrinated as a board have made this township fiscally sound. And I passed a sound township on to you, Jerry, and a strong township, and a growing township. The Chief of Police, and I know the Chief absolutely would want me to recognize, Chief Carmen Petten, who has moved the Police Department into the 21st century, and Chief Viola is doing the same, has brought the morale of the company, of that force, that is really now cohesive. You have an absolute outstanding Police Department, Public Works, Rich Dougherty, Steve Sinabaldi, you know, second to none. There's so many things that happen behind, behind the scene that you don't see, that sometimes just, push comes to shove, but it ends up where it's always in the best interest of the people, the community. And this board, we may have arguments, we have differences of opinion, but the fact of the matter is, it's always, and always will be, for the betterment of the community, for you, the people, always. And so many people have gotten very involved in the past couple of years. Keep it up, because that's what makes a community grow. We're not a stagnant community. We are first class. We are one of the best in the Commonwealth. And you, the people, the community, you, the Board of Commissioners, and the staff of this township, you're the reason why people move here. This is desirable, this is safe, and kudos to you. You're the reason, I'm just one of the links. I'm just one of the links. And I couldn't have done it without the huge support of my family. Family is everything. My bride is here tonight, and I want to say that. When I was sworn in, you held the Bible, and I would like you to come up tonight, if you could, and share this with me, and I know Mr. Gentile will probably take a couple of snapshots.
Gentlemen, if you would.
Look, if anybody else wants to come up.
Come on up, gang.
Oh, you don't want to?
Take a team shot.
Thank you very, very much. Great to meet you. I miss you guys.
Larry, if you want to take pictures, you can.
Debater, I'm sorry.
Chris, I just want you to know, Michelle asked me who wound you up tonight.
What's that?
Never heard you talk that much. Who wound you up tonight?
You were sitting, and I accidentally, I wasn't trying to pull it out.
Why? Thank you. My honor. Chris, I think. Thank you.
What a class act he is, just a class act.
Sorry, just a little verklempt.
I'm a little verklempt.
Shouldn't I be using that word? Shouldn't I? That's Yiddish.
Thank you, all in all, and next on the agenda, I'm only kidding, I guess. Can he move that quickly in there? Thank you, I'm very, I'm very, very honored. I need my glasses. So that will bring us to item number 14, other business. So, Mr. D'Amelio, you start that off.
Thank you, President Connell. I want to thank the Westgate Hills Civic Association for hosting the annual Santa Christmas Festival at Westgate Park, I was on December 2nd. And also thank the Manoa Fire Company for escorting Santa to the park, and also, Manoa Fire Company is, tonight and tomorrow, bringing Santa around to our areas in the township. I also, you know, it's the end of the year, so I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays. I also want to thank our township staff for the work that they do, from Larry all the way down. I mean, you know, when you look at the storm that we had Saturday, which was really nothing, we've had significant storms throughout the years that I've been a Commissioner, and the police, the fire, the EMS, Public Works, they're out there while we're home, some of us are home safe, and they're out there helping us. And there's a lot of things, as Commissioner Connell stated, there's a lot of things that the township does behind the scenes that you don't even see. So I thank all of you for the hard work that you do throughout the year, and I wish all of you a safe and happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. McCloskey?
Sure. I want to remind everybody that this Friday, Hada will have a candlelight vigil at Lenark Crossing at 6 o'clock. I think it'll be a great event, you know, we're going to remember some people who are no longer with us, and it'll hopefully be a supportive time for some people who may be struggling during this holiday season. Rain date is Sunday, the 17th, but again, if you can make it at Lenark Crossing in the 2nd Ward, right there, it's going to be a great location, right at that triangle, it'll be very visible to people going down Darby and Westchester Pike, and it should be a powerful event. So if you can make it, 6 o'clock Friday, Lenark Crossing. The second item I have is that the Oakmont Fire Department will be going through the 3rd Ward this Sunday to spread some holiday cheer, so if you're around, run outside when you hear the sirens, and say hello to your local firemen. With that, Mr. Connell, just let me echo the comments of my colleagues, it has been a pleasure to serve with you the last two years. You know, this is sort of like a Connell-themed update when I'm talking about Hada, and I'm talking about the Oakmont Fire Department, two issues that I know are very dear to your heart, and, you know, I would echo what you said in your comments, and I would say to you, from my observation, it's definitely. from my observation, it's definitely true, and the highest compliment I can give you is that as a Commissioner, your desire was first and foremost, agree or disagree, was to try to help people. And I think that's the highest compliment any of us can hope to achieve.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you. Mr. Siegel?
Thank you. First, I just want to comment on, there was a ribbon cutting and a celebration that we opened, or formally opened, the Police Department portion of the Municipal Services Building last week. And it's been a long time coming, and I've made numerous presentations, but to see and hear from the police officers, the chief, the deputy chief, and the sort of, the joy that they have in being able to perform their work in a first-class facility is very heartening. I want to thank the community for supporting us doing this. I hear from a lot of people who are very aware of the change, and not only is it cosmetic, but it allows a first-class force to really operate in a truly first-class way. In addition, the township will be moving into the upper floor on Friday so that there will be no township staff available. Services will continue as always, but the staff will not be, they'll be moving, so you won't be able to reach them on Friday. But hopefully, all will be well, and Monday morning, they'll be up. And I know they're looking forward to working in a modern building without space heaters in every room and proper ventilation and all those nice things. So it's been a long time coming, and, you know, for me, it's, you know, chairing the Property Committee all the years and finally seeing this come to fore, it's very nice. I want to also remind people separately, on Friday is, not Friday, Sunday, the 17th, is the annual Maryland Park Social, which is a large event in one of the neighborhoods in the 4th Ward. And finally, I do want to thank you, Mr. Connell, for your service. You have always been a gentleman. You have treated everyone with respect, and I appreciate that greatly, even when we've disagreed. You have been, whether it's me or anyone else, respectful, professional, and a true gentleman, and I thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate those words. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, thanks. Just echo what everybody has said, Chris. You're truly a class act in every sense of the word. And, you know, I think you've always put the interest of the residents first and foremost. So that's a great testament to you and to your leadership and service to the township. So thank you. Just on the College Avenue, I know we want to conclude the year with another update on College Avenue, but the College Avenue Bridge, they're actually making some good progress there, finally. They had the Sepultepec line closed down for a whole weekend, Jimmy, and they actually got the span of the bridge up, so, which is encouraging. So soon we get some good weather, I think we're gonna, we're still way behind schedule, but I expect that, worst case, they will be complete by May, completed by May, but hopefully sooner than that. And finally, just want to wish everybody Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and healthy 2018 to everybody. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, during your eight years, there have been a number of times where kids from local high schools or grade schools, or some of our Cub Scout and Boy Scout troops have been here in the past to see government in action. But they all missed something tonight, and it's a very, very, very important part of our 240-year-old republic, and that is the peaceful transition of power. And the class that you've shown tonight, the dedication you spent the last eight years doing, is an example for all of us, and frankly, it's an example for people in Washington at the highest places of power in our government to see what, that at the end of the day, it's about doing good, it's about serving the public, and then, when the public speaks and something new has to happen, it's about handling it with class and with grace, and you've been the picture of that. We've spent eight years together on this board, and we've disagreed on a few things, but we've never really argued. And I think I spent a lot more time being, getting almost into fisticuffs with your predecessor, Mr. Broido, than I ever did in the eight years with you. But I will miss you on this board for all the reasons that the people have stated, who are also on this board with me. But there is something else. There's a genuineness to your advocacy and to your care for the people of the 8th Ward and your care for the people of Havre Township. It's been a joy to watch. It's been a privilege to be on your board. So thank you for the chance to work with you for these eight years. I don't expect you to be out of public life long. I figure pretty quickly, the Chicken Owners Association of Havreford are going to appoint you its leader, and I suspect we'll see you in front of the board in the future. But till then, my very, very best wishes and my thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I have quite a bit here, Chris, but first of all, I'd like to talk about tours for tots. This year, it was the Brookline Firehouse where it always is. Mr. Viola gives us the firehouse to use at night, and it was a huge success. We had quite a few people, a lot of kids there, and I'd like to thank also Manoa, Lanark, and Brookline Fire Companies for their donations. They give us checks to buy some tours for the kids and to buy other things to help out. Also Gloria Cugini from the office, and Victor Berg. We had a Santa Claus that is presently on this board, but I won't say who it was, but he was there and did a fabulous job. I'll tell you, he's smiling right now as I talk.
I think you can just tell. Looks like he's gonna pop over there.
He really did. He got all those kids going. So my wife Franny and my granddaughter Maggie Del Guyon, Kenny Richardson, a past Commissioner, they were also a great help to us, along with Public Works Director Richard Dougherty, who really came through because we were short bins, and he got them around for us, along with Vic. Other things, the Grange Christmas Party, another wonderful success this year. Chad Brooks, who usually is here, he used to be Deputy Chief here, he and his wife Francine. If you get a chance, the Grange Estate, the Christmas decorations down there are unbelievable. And he literally spends a month and a half to two months just setting up. So that's an idea of how hard he works with his wife to make this a wonderful place at the Grange Estate. And also, all the fellas and the ladies that set the trains up. They take two months to set that up. If you have grandchildren, please, the Grange Estate, we only have like two more weekends left where they have it, or maybe three weekends, 1 to 4, Saturday and Sunday. Okay? Now, also, you heard Dan mention about the ribbon cutting at the police station. It was a huge success down there. We had quite a few people. It was cold, but the people came out. And I'd like to just say, we should, like Mr. Connell had said earlier, we should be particularly thankful for the great job Lori Handen-Wittop did, Chief Carmen Petten, who was here at the time, and Chief Viola. They were very instrumental in all the work that went on there and at the Township Building. Township Manager Larry Gentile, I couldn't catch him half the time because he was running down there while I was running up here. So he was right on top of everything. And also, President--
Run the other direction.
President Chris Connell was very, very involved. And that brings up the end of my speech here tonight, but I just want to mention to the children and the residents of the 7th Ward, Santa Claus will be coming through the Brookline section and all the 7th Ward this coming Sunday. And in closing, I made the suggestion, and I'm hoping the board will go along with it, that Mr. Connell, who everybody knows, and everything that everybody has said is certainly true about Chris, he's like a brother to me, and I really appreciate all he's done for me and helping me in my livelihood with being a Commissioner. But we also mentioned how hard Chris Connell worked on the veterans, for the veterans that we're gonna put up down there. And I certainly hope that Mr. Connell will be the one that directs everything that goes on down there, as far as the veterans, as far as where it goes and where it's gonna be. That's considered my field down there, and I certainly want to see all the things done right, and with Connell, he doesn't do anything wrong. So let's get Chris down there to do this.
I think you should ask Michelle about that.
Michelle, does he do anything wrong?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Chris, since we ended with you, I'll start with you then. Thank you very much. And on behalf of all the volunteer firemen, as the Commissioner, it's the liaison to the Bureau of Fire. What most people don't know is Chris was the Chairperson of our Recruitment and Retention Committee. And this past year, one of the significant things, among other things, was the tax credit for our property taxes, which came out of that committee, came to the Bureau of Fire, and came up with a point system to reward or to, even a little bit of reimbursement for our volunteer firemen, to give them a little bit of credit on their municipal tax bill. So from all the volunteer firemen, myself included, thank you very much for the work that you did with the Recruitment and Retention Committee. I'll tell you, it's appreciated by all the fire chiefs and all the firemen, even those that carry the hoses around. We certainly appreciate any attaboy that they get, and any recognition that we can give to our volunteers in this township is great, and it's greatly appreciated. So thank you for your work there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Gary, thank you for your service as well. You've been a valuable aide, is the auditor for all of us. Your review's always been good. Also, in the 9th Ward, the Manoa Fire Company will be next Monday and Tuesday, the 18th and 19th, Santa Claus will be around in there. You can check the Facebook page out of Manoa Fire Company's Facebook page for the hours. I think they're gonna start at 6:00 and go through 9:00. So anywhere in the first due area for Manoa Fire Company. And I'll echo, congratulations to Mr. Gentile and the whole staff on your move this week into the new building. The Police Department's made their move. It was actually fun to see all those other police chiefs being so envious of us and having a new building. Even the ones that got new buildings, ours clearly outshines them. It's a great facility. So thank you to the public, as Mr. Siegel pointed out, and Happy Holidays and safe travel, especially to all our students that are coming home, our young residents that come back here to what I consider America's best hometown. So safe travel both to and from home for any family that's traveling over the holidays. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mr. Leiva?
All right, I'd like to give a thanks. Big thanks to Lanark Fire Company for going around on Santa Sunday, which they do every year, and they do a great job, and kids love it. And so was, you know, good, great service to the 2nd Ward. I know they do some of the 8th Ward also. And Happy Holidays to everyone. Wanted just to say that to all of our staff, because they do work so hard. And, you know, to Chris, Chris, I know I've said it before, but really, a class act. You were such a good leader. Very proud to serve with you, and not just as a Commissioner, but as a friend. Really, when you came on board, you really showed me how much you cared and really just, you really work hard for your residents, and it's something that I really do respect. I have a lot of respect for you. And, you know, thanks. It really was a pleasure serving with you, and what a, really, what a class act.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Can you, what's the, Lanark Park? There have--
Hider.
Is there a fountain going in there or something?
Yeah. Oh, at Lanark Crossing Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a fountain going in down there.
Okay.
There's a, yeah, there'll be a vigil there. So go to the vigil, and you'll be able to see the fountain. It's actually under construction, so you can't--
Yeah.
It's not working, operating yet.
That's pretty exciting.
Yeah.
That's great.
It'll be a fountain when you come into the township.
Congratulations. You put a lot of hard work in there.
Thank you.
And that fountain was secured with funds from our CDBG, is basically a grant. So we have many more, hopefully, objectives like that, and it's just another example on how we're making Havreford Township a beautiful place. When people drive into Havertown from no matter which direction, we want them to know, wow, what a community they're in. So, but that's where that's been fun.
That's great. Yep. Just to add on to the building, again, it's, sincerely appreciate all Lori's efforts and her staff. It's gonna be an enormous day, an exciting day, Friday. So again, the building will be shut down, but services, our obviously our police, emergency services will still be in operation, but unfortunately, township staff will be shut down for that day, and we believe that we'll have all the computers and phones up and running by the end of the day, if not the following day. But we'll put out a township-wide message, we'll be using social media, Twitter, and the Township RoboCall, so we'll send out a call, probably Wednesday or Thursday, to remind all the residents and let them know. In the event there is an emergency, please don't hesitate to dial 911 because staff will still be able to respond.
And lastly, I'd like to thank you, Chris. Most of the board members don't know, but, you know, I had the pleasure of serving with Chris as a volunteer firefighter years ago, not knowing what I wanted to do with my life, and became a young paramedic. And I'll never forget the day where the township was starting. You know, we had one of the first paramedic programs in Delaware County. And we were at the firehouse, Lanark Firehouse, and Chris Connell said, "You just got your paramedic, what are you gonna do now?" And I said, "Well, I'm not sure, but my dad's telling me I gotta get a job." And Chris talked me into applying for the position here, the township, and Mr. Banner hired me in 1979, and that's because of Chris's recommendation. So I appreciate. Who would've thought that I'd be working side by side with you, as you as the president of the board and me as the township manager?
That was my plan.
Yeah, it was. That was my plan to get you in here with that fishing rod that time as well. But truly, Chris, you are the best public servant that I know of, and it's been an honor to work next year. You've been a great boss, a great friend. A glory I know is gonna miss, as well as the entire staff, and know that I'm always there for you and your family if you ever need anything. So I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you. I'm gonna miss you all. Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to say that, you know what, I do have to get that Santa Sunday is in the 8th Ward also. The Brookline Fire Company will be around over in the Pounder Mills section, the Carroll Park section. Chana Park was already done by the Lanark Fire Company. So everyone else in the 8th Ward, this Sunday, Brookline Fire Company will be coming out. Mr. Wexler, I believe you probably already know, I'm not sure, that in January 12th, Tuesday, January 12th, this board will be, once again, presenting the volunteer fire personnel with awards night, the awards night. It's on Tuesday this coming year so that we can accommodate all the Commissioners to be there. It's at the Crick. The Crick is all ready. They're waiting for you and what have you. It's at 6:30 on Tuesday, January 12th. Okay?
Who's running it?
It's the Bureau of Fire.
The Chief Sean it?
And the Chair of the, the Commissioner Chair of the Bureau of Fire, and then, the Bureau of Fire, yeah, themselves, and Mr. Gentile, right now. Because it is a township Commissioner function for those awards.
Hey, Chris, did you say January 12th?
Is it Tuesday?
It's a Friday.
All right. What's that Tuesday?
The 2nd Tuesday is the 9th.
What's the next one up?
The 16th.
16th. There it is. That's it.
It's Tuesday, okay.
All right, let's go back. That's the 16th, everybody.
Yep. The 16th. Well, you have to be there.
Yeah, I have to be there now.
Okay. So thank you very much for that. So put that in your books. In closing, I just would like to say, I guess I've really already said it all, I am going to miss the heck out of this board, the gentlemen on this board, the gentlemen and the ladies of the staff of the township. I just can't say enough, and that includes the Commissioner Committees where the residents serve on those committees. Like you'll have the Historical Commission, you'll have the Friends of the Grange, yeah, they have that committee. There's so many different committees that this township has that the residents, they're the ones that help the Board of Commissioners in making decisions and making this township move. So you guys have that, I guess you have a meeting next week, you have all the interviews. So there's another part that everybody here can get involved on those committees. I'm gonna leave it at that because right now, I just, I don't know what else to say than, I really love my community, and I really appreciate all of you people in this board and everybody connected to the community. I will miss doing what I do, but I will continue to be around because I'm still very involved in the community. I can only say to our young people out there, please get very much involved, whether you live here or you live somewhere else. Always, always be involved. That's how communities grow. That's how communities grow. That's how they work. That's how we grow. That's humanity. Thank you very much, very much for coming this evening. It's like it's a show. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I adjourn. Thank you very much. (applause)